Approval of meeting minutes, there are no meeting minutes approved. So, second order of business is confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, we have November 17th and November 23rd. The 23rd is a Monday and the 17th is a Tuesday. Okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item five is citizen speak. And before we start, we've got a really long agenda tonight. So, I am gonna keep citizen speak to about 15 minutes, give or take. So, if you have something to say, if we could make it, you know, get to the point, make it a little bit brief. There aren't too many people here tonight, so it may not be necessary. But if anybody wants to address the board, Dr. Shea. Yeah, right there. That's perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I've been asked by a number of citizens to speak to you tonight, rather than have a whole group speak to you, keep it short and to the point. As you know, the Harlanders for the 40B development up in Randolph Ave. Is appealing the decision of the zoning board. And many citizens are spending a lot of money with lawyers fighting this, their proposal. And supporting the zoning board in their fight to achieve what they felt should be. We're at a disadvantage because the town negotiated 90 units and the state knows that the town negotiated 90 units. So, we've been told we're starting at a disadvantage. And with the state housing board, it's not a level playing field. Everyone knows that. It's usually okayed right through. But citizens are spending a lot of money. Taxpayers who are also giving to the town their fair share, but they're spending private, their own private money fighting this ordeal. It's a five-story, three, five-story buildings. It's a housing project. And there aren't many people here probably that have lived in a housing project. But I have. And it's not good for a town. Your budgets are gonna change drastically. So, we feel the town should really be on its toes and wanna really, really fight this for the benefit of the town. We're doing our part, but we expect the town to do their part. And so, we have some questions that would like to know. Number one, who is going to represent the town in this appeal that the Harland Construction has? It'll take a litigator? Does, do you know who the litigator is? Because we would like to know. Does that litigator have any experience in fighting 40B? Has that litigator been successful in fighting it? We feel it takes a special counsel. And we feel that you can get advice, because this is new to you, this has never been done in the town. You can get advice from people at your disposal, namely Kathy O'Donnell and Mr. Whiteside. They are both experts in 40B. And we feel that you should really take advantage of their presence. But we would like to know who is going to be your litigator? What success they've had? Have they ever done it before? If we are spending money for private lawyers also to fight this, we feel that you people should step forward and put your best foot forward and really make an effort. If you make the effort, that's all we can ask from, as taxpayers, a serious effort. But we would like to know who you feel will do this expert job. It takes an expert witness or an expert litigator to do this. It does. It really does. Mr. Whiteside and Kathy O'Donnell will tell you that that is a true statement. So, we would like to know who you people are comfortable with in doing this litigation? That you support this person to do your litigation? And that they've done it before and have been successful? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shea.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item six on the agenda is the approval of Coffee Break Cafe common victuals license, which was formerly the Radio Coffee House. It's now under new ownership by Jen and Donnie Ormond. I don't know if we have them here tonight? Or you wanna come up and just say hi? How you doing?
Good evening.
Yeah, just sit there, that's fine. So, I understand that you have three locations in Quincy and one in, is it Braintree or Holbrook or?
No, we just have the three in Quincy.
Just the three in Quincy, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about your establishment and what the menus like? And how you plan on running the Quincy, I mean, the Milton location?
Sure. We sell specialty coffee. We have frozen drinks, iced tea, bagels, pastry, prepackaged snacks. We're open every day but Christmas in Quincy. What else did you ask?
Just what you planned up for the Milton location in terms of anything different from what? Do you have a lunch menu at all or is it just a?
We, we do not. We, we keep it pretty simple. We toast bagels, cream cheese, muffins, pastries. We do have a company that we deal with that brings in sandwiches for us.
I see.
So, no, we pretty much keep it the same.
Okay.
Excellent customer service and really good product is the goal.
What hours would you be open, Jen?
It would vary seasonally. In the summer, we'd like to stay open a little bit later. So, we typically open around five and close between, somewhere between seven and nine.
Besides, besides coffee, do you do any hot items at all for breakfast or anything like that?
Again, we have breakfast sandwiches that are brought in.
Oh, that are brought in?
Yeah.
Okay.
We toast bagels.
We have excellent references. You have a letter offering his highest recommendation from the mayor of Quincy.
Yes, sir.
And some other letters testifying to not only your, the good quality of your three stores, but also your extensive charitable efforts. So, that would be very welcome in Milton. I know a lot of, a lot of fundraisers and other organizations are always looking to local businesses to support them. And it sounds like, so you have quite a history of doing that in Quincy.
We do. We like to be involved in the community that we, that we work in, for sure. So, I mean, we have four children of our own. So, we certainly are on the other end of fundraising and helping as well, so.
You're pretty busy.
Yeah.
How long have you been in the Quincy locations?
It'll be 20 years this March for the first location. So, it's 20 years, 18 in our, we have been in Braintree and Holbrook as you, you brought up earlier. We were in Braintree for 10 years and Holbrook for one. The building was torn down. And nine for our youngest, nine years.
Okay. Yeah, you got a great location in, you know, that's a really vibrant location now, so it's.
Yeah, we're really excited.
Get the early morning rush with the tea and, yeah.
And you're planning to do a little bit of renovation to the store?
Yes.
We have the same amount of seating? Are you changing any of the seating plans?
I don't know exactly how many he has. I think 12.
We wouldn't go over whatever is approved, so we'll keep it probably the same amount.
Depending on what fits, 12 to 15 perhaps, seats inside?
Now, I don't know if the bump out is for outside seating is within Radio City or if it's further up on.
I'm pretty sure there's outdoor seating now.
Okay. So, you would continue the outdoor seating?
If it's allowed, yes.
Okay. Yes, I believe it's, it is allowed. I don't know how much they used it really, but I know the plate uses it quite frequently.
Yeah, that side it's new, but the other side of the street does use it an awful lot.
Yeah.
So, it would be nice to have, have seating on both sides.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think so. I've heard good things about Coffee Break, so we're, we're looking forward to having you in town.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're excited.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve common victual license to Coffee Break Cafe Incorporated, located at 24 Central Avenue contingent upon the applicant meeting all requirements set forth by the Board of Health and any other departments requiring inspections.
I'll second the motion. Have you been in touch with the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of a Verizon petition for a joint pole relocation. I don't know if we have anybody from Verizon here to talk about this, but.
Well, we have a memo from.
From John Thompson.
Town engineer saying that a public hearing wasn't necessary.
Right.
Because it's a relocation, not a new grant of location.
Right. Correct.
So, I'll move that we approve the petition from Verizon New England Inc. And the N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy for a joint relocation of pole 18562 on Brook Road approximately 10 feet westerly of its existing location, necessary for work being done under Mass DOT Project 607920.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item eight is discussion and approval of Yulin Skating Rink public skating fees. And Bill Clark is gonna come up to join us in this.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
I sent you the breakdown of what we do have that happening at the rink. What I didn't give you was the, all of the public skating hours. And this is actually right from their webpage. So, it goes through and has Sunday, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Tuesdays, 12 to 2. Wednesdays, 12 to 2. Thursdays, 12 to 2. Fridays, 7:00 a.m., 7 to 9:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturdays, it's 4 to 6. And then, there's a few changes in there because there are games on Saturday afternoon for five of those dates. What Curry has done is broken it down into primetime and non-primetime hours. Out of the primetime, it's only the Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And that means that all of the Monday through Thursday and the Friday morning are all non-primetime. So, they won't charge for the non-primetime. The charge would only be for the primetime dates. There's 59 of those primetime sessions. Every session is a two-hour window. The Friday nights will be 7 to 9. Again, the Saturdays are 4 to 6. I know that some of them are gonna get switched up to 2 to 4. And these all work that we have 16 hours of skating every week. These match with the permit that we got from the state. You see what the publication on the town's, on the Yulin Rink website is. There will be a link, there is a link from the town's website to Yulin Rink. So, that the hours are there too. I was asked to go through and figure out what it was going to cost, how, how those numbers would work and how we came up with the $5 figure. We actually went and we used a slew of other rinks. Some of them were within the five and the special permits that we have. Some of them are just regular DCR rinks and some of them are FMC rinks. Some of them are in the long-term permits, others are on the same special permit that we are the five-year originally and a one-year extension. It doesn't really seem to matter. The $5 seems to be the number that most people have taken in charge. Some of them are a little bit more and at the, at the sixth hole in number. Because we have these primetime hours, at $225 an hour that we could rent the ice for, that would make $450 that we have to then make up in the budget. That would mean 119 skaters would have to pay after we paid for staff. The fluctuation on the staff is that we have, we have two skate guards and two Zamboni drivers. The Zamboni drivers would be switching between the Zamboni and the door. They're the older of the people working that night. I broke those numbers down for you. You can.
Yeah, I've got some, so basically, we're estimating that there's 118 primetime public skate hours is.
Yes.
That's what the estimate is.
Yep.
And at $5, that winds up at $23,600? Is that what the number is? So, I guess talking about.
That, that is taken at the lower rate. That's taken at, that's if I rented it to just nonprofits?
Well, I, I guess what I'm looking for though is, is what do we anticipate that? Because I, I really don't care that much about what will be the opportunity cost because we're committed to public skate in those hours. So, so that opportunity cost is off the table anyways. So, all I really wanna know is, you know, ballpark, what, how much revenue are we gonna generate from public skate charging the $5 primetime? Can we figure that out?
I think if you do, $450 for an hour, $145 in staff time, it's $594. If you had 119 paid skaters at $5, that would be 595. That's your break even number. So, 119 in order to break even.
Okay.
You, you asked me about a number of how many people go. Because we've never had to, we've never had to charge, we never really kept track of what that number is.
Right.
The general manager came back and said it's somewhere between 80 and 120. Eighteen being conservative and 120 being, you know, optimistic that you're gonna get more.
Okay. So, you said 100, that would be somewhere in the middle.
Yep.
So, what's that mouth do?
At 100, you'd have $500 therefore.
Times how many?
You're, you're going to make, you're going to make a little bit more because you've got 450 for the ice time. So, you have $50 left over. You have 144 in staff time. You're down to 100. So, you just made 100 bucks if you.
What's the 450 for the ice time?
You have to rent the ice. We could rent the ice anyways.
Yeah.
We have.
So, that's the opportunity.
Yeah, that, that's the opportunity cost that isn't there though. Because we're not gonna do that. We're, we're committed to public skate. It's either free public skate or it's paid public skate. So, I don't see that as a cost or a missed opportunity.
So, the cost then is the 144, Bill.
Well, we changed, we changed from last year where we had Friday night was a 7 to 8, not 7 to 9.
Right. Understand.
So, we threw in another hour and we had to displace. We, we actually displaced Commonwealth Figure Skate.
Yep.
On the Saturday, we've actually displaced Norwood and Commonwealth Figure Skate. So, we actually did have to take and take away primetime hours for the public skating.
Right.
We had changed our public skating to allow for more primetime. We didn't have 118 hours of primetime last year.
But wasn't that because of the issue where the public skating hours previously weren't matching up with what was required under the DCR?
We did a cumulative, not.
So, but isn't that the reason that we made the change?
Yes.
Yes. So, so we're required to, these, these hours that are listed here, these are the required.
But we don't have to do Friday night. No. We don't have to do Friday night. We only have to do Friday.
But Saturday and Sunday are the required, right?
They're required. Those are the two that are required.
That was my question. So, Saturday and Sunday are required?
Yep. But not Friday night. So, I mean, realistically, I guess you could say, okay, back out, back out four hours out of the six. And out of the six of primetime.
Yeah, I think, I think that's just confusing though. My question's simple, just estimated what kind of gross revenue we're gonna make? And then estimated what additional costs, if any, are there? Because we're making people pay for public skate as opposed to giving it for free. So, I just wanna know bottom line, how much will this add to alleviate a little bit of the operating deficit that we currently have? Because we're not gonna change. Whether it's free or whether we pay, we're gonna have Friday night public skate. And we're committed to it.
Well, I think we're required to provide public skate under the DCR permit. I have a separate, a separate question that I have unless you want. Is there anything more on that? Because the, the question that I wanna explore with the board is, the $5 is based on Bill's research with some of these other rinks, but there are some, you know, Waltham, $2 for under 18, $4 for adults as a senior discount. Shea Rink, I mean, this is Arlington, $3 under age 16. The concern I have is whether we should consider a family cap. Because.
I agree.
You know, somebody who's got three or four kids who's coming to public skate, you're talking $20. Let's say, you know, you're trying to keep the kids busy on a weekend, you're talking maybe $20 on Saturday, $20 on Sunday. Like everything else in life, for some people, that's easy come, that's no, no problem.
Right.
But for other people, that might mean the difference between going to the rink or not. So.
And a lot of families have.
I think we need to think about whether families should have a cap, especially for families with multiple kids, so that we can not make this something that people can't come. We, we want people to come to the public skate and enjoy it.
A lot of people come as, as a single parent too because someone else might be working or have a commitment. And you have a three-year-old who might only spend 10 minutes on the ice and to charge $5 for that. And I know high school sports obviously has a cap for their families. So, I think we should probably look into that, you know, for people who have two, three, four kids. You know, a mother wants to bring them down.
Yeah. I, I think the problem is, you know, because there's a lot of things that we probably should consider, like, you know, disadvantaged youth, if, if, you know, there should be something to allow for, you know, some people to have, you know, not pay anything. And, and family passes, I agree with all that, but the problem is how to administer it.
Well, I think a family cap would be fairly easy to do.
It might be. You know, if, if you had a family cap, now, you know, one person from that family comes in to skate, how does that person know that they're under, you're gonna have to give them some kind of a family pass that they're gonna show?
No, I was thinking more, you know, if you're charging $5, if that's the decision to charge $5 a person, and I think that's still an open question because.
Right.
Some of these rinks do charge less than $5 and we're going basically from zero to five. You could charge, if we take that approach, $5 a person, then maybe, but no family shall pay more than $10. And that's the cost of two people. And if there's three kids rather than two kids, then that's at least a little bit of a break for, for a family of three kids. I, I'm guessing, Bill, for the, you know, I know that there are adults who use the public skate, but I'm guessing it's mostly kids who take advantage of this. If that's not correct, let us know.
I think it's mostly kids. I think it's actually, I don't think it's very young kids either. I think they're probably on the weekend. I think the Friday night is more.
On the weekend though, there are a lot of young kids that will do it. But, but you're right, on the Friday evenings, you'll have a lot of middle school kids.
Right.
That'll be doing it.
Well, I would take the same view for middle, whether it's middle school or little kids, you know.
Yeah. I think it would be difficult though to, if, if there were four people in a family to charge them $20. I don't think, I'd discourage them from skating.
Yeah. I, I agree with you, Sam.
This is the same, this is on a much smaller scale, the same problem that the schools have when they charge the activities fees for the sports. And then, you know, all the years on the warranty, every year, the question is, well, does that discourage kids from taking part in some of the sports? Because you're talking a few hundred dollars for, to take part. And I know that's an ongoing issue and concern for the schools, but this is on a much smaller level. But the principle's the same here. So, I think we need to consider a family cap. And whether $5 is the correct rate to charge. Obviously, the rink runs at a deficit.
So, would, would your idea be only if that family came together though? That's the question. What if that family comes? I mean, you can have a family where there's, you know, one person in the family is 17 years old and has his own car and comes by himself. I mean, how?
I think it's the number who are there. If it's a, if it's a parent with three kids showing up, I think we should have a cap. And, you know, if it's one person coming in, that's, that's different.
Even though they are a family of three and they.
There's not a whole lot of parents that skate on Friday night. It's mostly just.
Dropping the kids off.
So, they drop the kids off.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Right. But that's, that's the thing. If they're dropping three or four kids off, then that's an expensive, for some, not, again, not for everybody, but for some people. And I think we need to consider the broad range of people who might be using the rink.
And then those five, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but, you know, now that they drop them off and, and, you know, one kid and three of his buddies say, we're all brothers. I mean, yeah, how do you, how do you enforce it? It just, it gets insane.
Yeah. But I, I don't think, I mean, the public skate doesn't start until the end of November, right?
And don't put it past those kids who do it.
We have, we have another meeting before the public skate become, actually, we have two meetings before public skate takes effect. So, I think we should ask Bill, Bill, I don't know if you ask these other rinks that question, whether they have any kind of a maximum cap on people coming in to use the rink at any one time.
The only one I know that, that has something like that is Arlington. And Arlington has a, you buy a multi-pass. They're the only, the only one that does that. The others are just three and five. I mean, if they're, if they're going to charge three for the younger ones, it's five for, you know, 12 and up.
Well, I mean, another option then, if we're concerned about administering that, Arlington is $3 for anyone under 16 and for seniors, and $6 for adults. So, the rinks that are charging $2 or $3, that's another option that makes it a little more financially viable for a family of, you know, with a few kids.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess, and I still have to see the estimated revenue numbers of, I mean, at $3, it might get to the point where, forget it, it's just not even worth it. And we're not talking big dollars here that we're gonna raise.
No, we're not.
We're probably talking 25 grand or something like that. And that's assuming there are no additional expenses associated with paid public skate.
Yep.
I mean.
Well, as you said, we have, public skate is a requirement under the contract, so we have to offer that.
Yes.
And the question is, can we raise a little bit of revenue to help offset the deficit that's run every year running this rink? And.
But at the same time, not discourage people.
That's right.
From being able to skate.
Right.
So, it's a, it's a fine line that we have to.
That's right.
Just, just run with the numbers that I did here. There's a $14,000 deficit just on those 118 hours. To take away more, you'll have that much more deficit.
Wait a minute. But aren't you building in the, the opportunity cost?
The opportunity cost, yes.
So, I, I don't think we can consider that. I think Tom is right on the opportunity cost, that that should come out of the calculation altogether.
Yeah. The, the assessment should be just how much, strictly, how much revenue are we estimating, estimated to raise by charging?
So, take four out of the six hours away and just charge for the two hours that we've had to displace from last year.
Well, do we have a calculator? I mean, how, how many public skate hours, primetime public skate hours are there?
118.
118. Let's see if I can calculate it quickly.
I don't think the right inquiry, Bill, is what, is how much we're displacing from last year. Because the question last year was, are we abiding by the requirements of the permit and giving the public skating hours for the hours that we're required to give it? So.
Well, I think it was, it was a case that several of the other rinks have had the same discussion. And if you take the 16 and you do it, you know, you multiply it by how many weeks we're open. And then, you look at what we had for primetime, or what we had for public skating hours last year. Between days off from school, school vacations and daytime hours, we had more than the 16 hours per week.
Okay. So, if, if we have, there's 59 days, right?
Yes.
59 public skating.
Yes.
Yes.
Days.
Yep.
And the two-hour sessions, and it's $5 for the two-hour session, correct?
Yep.
It's not $5 per hour. So, it's 59.
No. $5 for two hours.
You got it wrong.
$5 for the two hours, yes.
Yes.
That's what I said. That's what I said. So, you get 59 times approximately 100 skaters, times five. That's $29,500. So, that's what we're talking about in raised revenue if we charge. If we charge $3, it's 100 times 59 times 3, $17,700.
I'm gonna take up the staff cost.
Be which?
The staff cost.
Yeah, well.
The staff cost goes up only because of the, you've got two skate guards, you've got two older people, one taking money, one running the Zamboni.
Okay. Okay, so if we weren't going to charge, we'd only have one skate guard, or...
You'd have one Zamboni driver.
Okay, so we have an extra Zamboni driver that also takes money.
You'd probably have one skate guard and one Zamboni driver.
Okay. So, and how much is it for one Zamboni driver, one?
Nine dollars and fifteen dollars.
For the two hours?
Nine for skate guard, fifteen for the Zamboni driver.
For the two hours?
The two hours, per hour.
Okay. So that's nine plus fifteen times two.
You've got to go three, because you've got to get them in, you've got to get them out. So you've got three hours each.
Okay, so nine plus fifteen plus...
So you're saying seventy-two.
Seventy-two times fifty-nine.
Bill, this may be a silly question, but why would you only need one Zamboni driver if you're not charging? I thought that's what you were going to say.
He's going to watch the door. You need two, you need two adults there. If you have a hundred kids running around, you're not doing it with two, two kids and one adult.
Okay, so Sam, approximately twenty-five thousand dollars net additional revenue for five. And seventeen minus forty-two hundred, or, you know, some thirteen thousand dollars at three. So that's what we're talking about. Assume we get a hundred people on average.
And they came back with, you know, eighty to a hundred and twenty, so...
Yeah, so that's a middle number.
A hundred would be nice, but I'm not sure you're going to get that many. Certain dates you will. And it's a...
Yeah, I'm sure as you go deeper into the, more towards the spring, you get fewer, because the weather starts getting better.
Yeah.
People go outside, but, so...
Gets a little rowdy, which is why you need the four people, too.
I just don't want to shut people out, you know.
That's right.
Yeah, and I...
Especially with a change like this.
I totally agree.
Initial change, I think that, you know, families, you know, especially ones that have two or three kids on the Saturdays and Sundays, it's, would be problematic.
I think the twenty-dollar cap is fine. The thing about coming in three different cars, you know, sorry, that just, you can't figure that one in.
I was thinking a lower cap than twenty dollars, but I think we should take it under advisement. And we have two more meetings before the public skate goes into effect, before we need to make a decision on the rates.
Yeah, Bill, could you do some research in how a, how a family cap might work? How we could administer it, if there is a way?
That's good.
And I guess, is this the first year Shea's going to be charging public skate?
It's the first time, if I go back to my list.
Because DCR actually just approved it last year anyways, right? So you could have done it...
Short answer is yes, they did. But other, some of the other rinks have already been charging, just because there is an associated cost with it. Also, because when we took the permit the first time, DCR did say that they would adjust the rates in the second year, which never happened, so they, rinks went about doing it themselves and just up their rates.
Okay.
Shea did not charge. Arlington is under a long-term, long-term permit. They did. Their rink is run by their recreation department, so they have a whole different financial scheme over there. A lot of the DCR rinks themselves may not charge. They say, they say they will, then, you know, you'll find someplace else that say that they don't. We won't know until November twenty-seventh, which ones are and which ones aren't. You get into the FMC, you get into the other private rinks, and yes, they all charge.
Bill, could you check with our Parks and Recreation Department and see whether, what their thoughts are on whether a cost like that, even though it sounds minimal, if there are multiple kids, what's their experience with other use of the parks and some of their recreational programs in town? How big an impact is that on people taking advantage of, this is not a program, but a resource? And if Arlington or any of the others recently implemented...
I actually asked the question a little bit different in that, within the Parks and Recreation events, what happens if somebody cannot pay and they don't go? So they didn't have, they don't have a...
Yeah, well, and that's what we don't want to have happen here with the rink, with people who might have been using it to use it.
I, I'm a firm believer that we should never turn away anybody, regardless of means, you know.
I'm not saying to, I'm just answering the question that was asked.
I know you are, but I just think that we shouldn't be, you know.
The other question is, for any of these rinks that within the last year or two started charging fees for public skate that didn't before, what was their experience? Did they have an attendance drop-off, or was it the same? And if it was the same, then...
I think when you get...
Maybe it's not an issue.
Well, we got one of Ross Roxbury, the John Roach Community Arena. Did they, are they new, charging five dollars or...
Isn't that an FMC rink? I believe it is. They charge.
Yes, it is.
They charge.
So...
FMC was adamant that they do.
Okay. So maybe it's worth a call to them to see what experience they had.
Yeah, that would be worth looking into.
What their number looked like, up or down?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that they kept the number, because DCR didn't keep numbers.
Even anecdotal evidence that they might have, or...
I know that some of the, some of the rinks have skate rentals. When you see a rink with skate rentals, they really weren't concerned about the, they're not concerned about the admission fee, because they'll take the five dollars for the skates. You get a lot more people renting non-primetime ice when you have, you have smaller groups that can come in and use those non-primetime hours, if you have skate rentals. We do not. That, that's one of them. I know Shea would rather rent five dollars skates and not charge somebody, because they've already got your five dollars.
And right now, we don't have skate rentals.
Skates came with their rink, so they supplement new ones in, because you have to replace X amount every year. But bottom line is, many of these rinks had skate rentals that they were able to be making money on their skates right along. The other part to it is, their overhead isn't what our overhead is. Our overhead is, we have a much bigger box. They have a much smaller box. It costs us more for utilities because of the size of the arena. You've got eight hundred, you've got eight hundred seats around the ice that the other rinks don't have. So you've got a bigger box that you're heating, that you're creating ice for.
I think if we can get some of that basic information...
Yeah.
Then we'll be in a better position to make a decision on what the, what the fee should be.
Good. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, see what you can do, Bill. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Shopping my pencil again. Okay, quarter of these. Okay, we're ahead of schedule a little bit. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the presentation of the five-year financial forecast.
Mr. Chairman, we did send out a meeting saying that that would start at eight P.M. I was wondering if you want to move up the budgets, the town accountant's budgets.
Sure, okay, you can do that.
Just think, I don't want anyone coming in in the middle of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll take up the approval of the Audit Central Business Office and Unemployment Budgets. And do you want to have Amy up here to discuss those? Hi, Amy.
Hey, Amy, how are you?
Good evening, Amy.
Okay, so why don't we talk about audit budget first? I mean, that's kind of a, that's kind of a bill. But the, I guess the dilemma we had this time was, a town meeting did vote an audit committee in a year ago. That committee has not been formed yet.
It's a moderator-appointed committee.
It's a moderator-appointed committee. And that committee was going to be responsible for hiring...
Yes.
Yeah.
The auditor. So at this point, we are looking to extend the current auditor's contract for another year. Is that...
Yeah, it expired with the fiscal year-end, June thirtieth of fifteen audit. So before they can start work on two thousand and sixteen, either the contract will need to be renewed or we'd have to go out to bid, which I'm not sure we have time, whereas there's no audit committee in place, or full audit committee in place.
So what's in this budget is the estimated, is that the negotiated price, or is that a...
No, it's, I just sent the audit firm an estimate. He said they'd probably keep the fees level and then to increase it for some additional cost for Gatsby sixty-seven and sixty-eight.
Okay.
For the work, the test work they need to perform for that.
Okay. But they, for FY fifteen, they included the Gatsby sixty-seven, sixty-eight within their price? Because they had to do it for the year-end on June thirtieth.
It wasn't in their price, because when we went out for the contract, it wasn't known, so...
Okay, yeah, so your FY sixteen budget is the FY fifteen, the June thirtieth, fifteen audit? It would have to be, because you're going to pay it afterwards, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense now. Just so everybody stands, there was a new accounting pronouncement put out by Government Accounting Standards, which is, there's two of them, Gatsby sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Gatsby sixty-seven requires that all pension funds do different actuarial studies and report their full liability for pension on their books, their full unfunded liability. And if there are multiple entities in that pension fund, also to split out the liability by each entity. So Milton's Fund has Milton Housing Authority and the Town of Milton in it.
Mm-hmm.
So it was necessary to actually split those two out and determine liabilities for each of them. And then in Gatsby sixty-eight is for the employer on how they have to record their liability on their books. So it's, it's a big change.
And this, this fee isn't even for the actuarial evaluation, because PARAC did that piece for us for free. This is actual additional test work and additional hours in the field by the audit team to audit the information we give to PARAC to do the valuation.
Okay, so judgment that the sixty-three, two seems reasonable.
And this would be based on a one-year extension of the current auditor's contract?
Just a one-year extension, right?
Right.
Yeah, and we should check in with the moderator and see where he's at on these and other appointments. I agree, we should wait until that audit committee's in place to let them put out to bid. So I think the one-year extension makes sense here.
Yeah, you have to do something.
That's really what we have to do.
Okay.
So I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY seventeen audit budget in the amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars for both the contingent and non-contingent budgets.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Central Business Office, really not much change from, I mean, other than rolling salaries up a little bit for... And these salaries don't include any potential contract, contractual increases.
Correct.
These are just rolling forwards for step increases and longevity and that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And you're holding, you're holding your general expenses at the FY sixteen for the non-contingent and an additional thousand dollars for the contingent.
Actually, no, they're the same.
Oh, okay.
Holding them level with six.
It looks like a six on my, okay, it's a five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so they're exactly the same?
Yes.
Okay. Now, just for curiosity, what was, there was a ten thousand dollar decrease in your, in your contractual expenses?
From...
From FY fifteen to...
I believe...
Was that the parking ticket...
Yeah, it was the reorganization and the movement of the parking ticket contract to the treasurer's budget.
Yeah, okay.
How has the reorg worked out, Amy, for your department?
It's worked out great. I mean, I would be lost without the financial analyst this year with everything that I've taken on new with the forecast and whatnot. She's really kept it together as far as keeping the books up to date on a monthly basis. And had we not done that reorganization, I didn't have that staff person, I probably wouldn't have gotten through the audit as well as we did. It's been key, and I think probably the town treasurer could speak more, but I think it's really been more convenient for the residents coming in to do business. We still get some stragglers that don't realize that we've made the change to try to do all the business in the treasurer's office. But I think it's just kind of kept the activity in and out, so people can focus on, you know, the day-to-day stuff without as many interruptions. It's helped us get through the workload.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warren Committee the FY seventeen Central Business Office budget in the amount of three hundred, nine thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars for both the contingent and non-contingent budgets.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And then finally, the unemployment budget, which is, as it has been for the past few years, at a hundred thousand. The only other question on this budget is on the non-contingent budget, leaving it at a hundred thousand. Knowing that in a non-contingent budget, we're definitely going to have layoffs, and it could well be significant. So it would just seem to me that it would make more sense to have a higher number in the, in the non-contingent. I mean, from experience, do we use pretty much the hundred thousand?
Well, the last three years, it's averaged ninety-six thousand.
So basically, we'd use the whole hundred.
Right, but back, you know, back in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen, it was over, I mean, over a hundred thousand.
Right, those are the years when the unemployment was extended.
Extended benefits, so I felt when I was doing the budget that we've always, you know, felt that, considering the financial constraints, that this was an item that could truly be funded, any overage out of the reserve fund, that it would be appropriate to request a reserve fund transfer if it went over the hundred thousand. So I kept it level.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, I mean, the reserve fund could see a lot of pressure from other sources on a, on a non-contingent budget to begin with.
In two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, on the back page of this budget, it was at fifty thousand. It was bumped up in ten...
Yes.
At the height of the recession.
Right.
But we're, if we're using most of it.
I didn't include fifteen in this, but fifteen's actual was only sixty-two thousand dollars. So that actually brings the average down lower. But when I did it, I probably...
But Tom is right, that the non-contingent budget will, will raise the unemployment, the total liability. Maybe we should put a higher amount in there for the non-contingent request.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation. I really would.
Do you want to defer this one, think about it, and defer this one until the seventeenth, or vote a new number tonight? What do you think?
It's just one number.
What's the right number, though? That's the only thing I would, the question is how do you want it based?
It'll be a guess, no matter what you do.
Two hundred?
Yeah, a hundred and fifty or two hundred.
Probably a hundred and fifty would be safe anyhow.
Well, let's see, two thousand and ten, actual expenditure was over two hundred, it was two thirty-three. Two thousand and eleven is a hundred and seventy-six.
I mean, even in the height, I think, I think one fifty would be more than enough, but, I mean, you can't really predict what's going to happen.
Right, I mean...
But I mean, even in the height of the recession in two thousand and ten and eleven, we only had one year over two hundred thousand. The other two highest years were one fifty-four and one seventy-six.
Do you have any memory of what the layoffs were in those years?
That was mostly because there was extended benefits more than what people...
People went back on the rolls that were already off the rolls.
That's right. But the non-contingent budget will mean layoffs, so we have to plan for that.
Yeah, and you've got to figure the schools, I mean, they'd have to notify by April. And, I mean, you know, could there be twenty, but thirty layoffs in the schools if...
Well, all right, so, you know, in any event, we'd have to revise this to submit it to the Warren Committee. I think we should probably defer it until the seventeenth and take this one up and consider what we think the right number might be for non-contingent and revote it, because we're going to have to revise it anyway.
Sure, okay, that's fine with me. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Now, we're five minutes to eight. Want to do it now? Okay. All right. Actually, we're right on schedule for what we're supposed to be on that one. So we're going to do the five-year financial forecast. So I'm going to invite, is Glenn here? Hey, Glenn. So the first thing I wanted to say before you get started is, we had a committee this year, or not a committee, but a working group, doing the five-year financial forecast of Emery, Amy, and Glenn. I've looked through this thing already, they did a great job. You may not like the numbers, but, but the process, I thought, was great and the amount of work that went into it was commendable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am your town administrator, and I would like to present to the board of selectmen and the audience the financial forecast for the fiscal years two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one. This financial forecast was prepared by the town administrator, the town accountant, the assistant superintendent for school business affairs, with input from all department heads, boards, and committees. The financial forecast is not an exact science. It is a top-level view, which includes historical trends and data, along with input from department heads, boards, and committees, as I had said earlier. A forecast can serve as an early warning system to detect a future gap between revenues and expenditures in a comprehensive and structured manner. So I want to outline for you how, how we did our procedure in formulating these financial forecasts. We prepared two five-year financial forecasts as follows. The forecast assumes no changes in the structure of the town government, consolidation of departments, regionalization, or the method or manner in which services are delivered to the town. All contractual obligations and unfunded mandates have been included in both forecast scenarios. The town accountant and I reviewed actual revenue and expenditures for fiscal seven through fiscal fifteen with historical information and assumed our estimates from that. We reviewed budget revenues and expenditures for fiscal year sixteen. Now, as I had said earlier, we did two scenarios. We did a needs-based forecast and inflation-based level-dollar forecast. The needs-based forecast, we had requested all department heads to submit to us a five-year financial plan. We wanted them to take a bottom-up approach to their departmental budgets. Because we, our last override was in fiscal year two thousand and ten, we know that a lot of these departments were lean over these past seven years, and we really wanted them to take a look at their department and how they can provide the services to the town that the residents expect and want from the Town of Milton. The inflation-based level-dollar was a forecast that we prepared using fiscal sixteen budget as our base figures. The salary and wages are projected to increase approximately three percent annually for town departments and four point three percent annually for the school department. The wage adjustments are a two percent plus steps in lane increases. These assumptions are based upon historical figures. All contracts expire at the end of fiscal year sixteen, so that's important to note. All of our union contracts expired this June of two thousand and sixteen. And future wage adjustments are unknown at this time. General expenditures are projected to increase three percent on the town side and the five percent on the school side to account for inflation and increase in contractual costs. Now, it's important to note this first slide regarding general fund revenue. The major source of the general fund revenue is from property taxes and accounts for eighty-one percent of our total revenue. The second largest source of revenues is from our state and local aid, which is ten percent. So this is really important, those two percentages are really important to focus on because ninety-one percent of our revenues are the result of our property taxes and our state and local aid, with the rest, about nine percent, coming from motor vehicle excise, other local receipts, and water and sewer indirect costs. When we forecasted these revenues, we forecasted them with a moderate conservative approach, which has been done historically over the, over the years in the Town of Milton, and we felt that it's important to continue to estimate revenues at a moderately conservative number. So now I'm going to turn it over to town accountant Amy Dexter, and she's going to give an overview of the assumptions that we used in forecasting the revenues. Want to use my notes or your? Okay, so as Emery mentioned, the biggest source of revenue that the town has is property taxes. Properties taxes represent eighty-one percent of the total general fund revenues. Property taxes are projected to increase two point five percent annually, as allowed under Proposition Two and a Half. This, combined with new growth estimates, makes up for your total property taxes. For fiscal sixteen, the new growth that was just recently approved by the assessors' office is about seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. For fiscal years two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one, the chief appraiser has given us new growth estimates to be five hundred thousand annually for those fiscal years. State and local aid, second-largest source of revenue. It accounts for ten percent of the total general fund revenues. State and local aid in these forecasted years is projected to increase two percent annually, and this is based upon historical trends. The third-largest source of general fund revenues is motor vehicle excise taxes. This accounts for four percent of the general fund revenues. The town has experienced fluctuations in the amount collected annually in motor vehicle excise. For fiscal years two thousand eleven through two thousand fifteen, the annual collected amount for motor vehicle excise taxes was approximately three point three million dollars. For fiscal sixteen, these revenues were budgeted at three point three million, and they're projected to increase two percent annually for fiscal years two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one in the forecast. Other local receipts account for the remaining balance of the general fund revenues. Other local receipts, actually, I've missed one, water sewer indirect costs, which is part of the revenue slide. Water and sewer indirect costs represents those costs paid for in the general fund that we can charge as indirects to the water and sewer enterprise funds and are reported as revenue in the general fund. So, for example, a portion of my salary is charged to water and sewer because I take care of the financial reporting in the books for water and sewer enterprise funds. That's, accounts for about one percent of general fund revenues. Those are expected to increase one point five percent annually. This, again, is based upon historical trends. Okay, the remaining balance is other local receipts and other financing sources. Other local receipts represent about four percent of total general fund revenues. They are pretty constant from year to year, and they're forecasted to increase only slightly for fiscal two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one. Again, these are based upon historical trends. Other financing sources represent transfers in from other funds outside of the general fund. For instance, transfers in from the capital stabilization fund, the police leash law fund, and the overlay reserve. Historically, over the last two years, we've had some large transfers in from the capital stabilization fund related to some bond premiums. Those are not forecasted to reoccur in fiscal year seventeen through twenty-one. Accordingly, the only thing that we included for other financing sources in the forecast are the transfers in from the overlay reserve of approximately a hundred and sixty thousand a year, plus another fourteen hundred dollars a year from the leash law. Again, these estimates were based upon historical trends. The last item in other local receipts that I want to talk about is free cash. Free cash is certified by the Department of Revenue on an annual basis and is not available for appropriation until it's certified. Milton's free cash, as of June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, was certified at two million, one forty-seven, eight hundred and six dollars. Best practices indicate that free cash only be used for non-recurring expenditures and not be used to fund normal recurring operating expenditures. The expenditures forecasted for FY seventeen through FY two thousand twenty-one do not include any significant identified non-recurring operating expenses. Accordingly, we did not include the use of free cash in our forecast. And that's it for me. Amy, will you do me a favor? Go back to this slide for a minute. I wanted Amy to go back to this slide for a moment because I think it's really important to see the percentage increase from fiscal sixteen to fiscal twenty-one. It's a fifteen percent increase in revenue over those years, and I just, I wanted to point that out because I think it's important as we go further into our forecast. Thank you, Amy. Okay, this is our needs-based expenditure as a percentage of total forecast. And again, I just want to go for everybody's benefit what we did as a needs-based forecast. We requested all departments submitted needs-based forecast for fiscal seventeen through fiscal twenty-one. This forecast represents those expenditures the department head, board, or committee feels are necessary to provide the level of service required to effectively meet the needs of the residents of the town. This forecast includes new positions in some departments, which are summarized in the assumption section of this presentation. An additional annual wage adjustments have been projected in the two percent range. And as you can see from this slide, the schools, which are, the schools, including the Blue Hills School, are approximately forty-nine percent, and the employee benefits percentage is approximately seventeen percent, which is sixty-six percent of the, under the needs-based forecast. So I think that's really important to point out. So now I want to go through the needs-based forecast expenditure assumptions. Amy, if you can go to the next slide? No, I'm going to go to the next one first. I want to explain how we get to the, yep, the assumptions, thank you. So these are our needs-based forecast expenditure assumptions. All departments were asked to submit, as I had said earlier, the needs-based forecast for fiscal seventeen through twenty-one in narratives to explain major increases from the fiscal sixteen budget. State and county assessments are projected to increase two percent annually based upon average experience over the last three fiscal years. Debt services projected to equal one point nine percent of the tax levy plus the debt exclusion. Employee benefits is projected to increase two percent annually based upon average increase experience over the last three fiscal years. Appropriations to stabilization funds are projected to equal two-thirds of one percent of the general fund revenues, net of the debt exclusion, which is consistent with historical calculations. All contractual obligations and unfunded mandates have been included in this forecast, and the needs-based expenditure assumptions for the major departments are going to be summarized now. And I am going to recognize Glenn Pavlicek, Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs, to go over the school's assumptions.
Okay, we want to just walk through what the assumptions were. First assumption is staffing will remain, general staffing will remain relatively stable as our NESDEC projections don't indicate an appreciable increase in enrollment over the next few years. As Emery mentioned, salary increases for unionized staff are settled through this year, and we, for the purposes of these projections, are looking at two percent cost of living increases across all departments out, just to give us a number to work with. Our non-salary costs are projected to increase at three percent. We talked about this in our group. With the exception of utility costs at four percent and special ed at six percent because those are historical trends on those amounts. It should be noted that eighty-five percent or so of our budget is salary, and of the non-salary part, close to half of it is special education. So the contracted services in special education, the out-of-district placements in special education consume a lot of the non-salaried portions of our budget. And we, a couple of caveats here, that projections are always subject to variation, the mobility of population and so forth. If you looked five years ago at the birth rate in Milton and asked how many of those children five years ago who were born here entered kindergarten this year, you would find that it's a hundred and five percent of them, which is quite, quite a trick. But what it means is we have a significant influx of people over time. So it's very hard for a company like NESDEC to really accurately project what your enrollment's going to be a few years out because you have to look at the mobility trends of our population. And we have a mobile population, and they are attracted to Milton. And the standard caveat at the bottom is that unfunded state mandates are very popular in education, and it's very hard to project, to predict what's going to happen with some of those. Amy, could you click to the next slide? When we were setting this up, the school committee asked us, asked me to consider the following priorities when we were building this budget. So this needs-based budget does assume a continuation of the initiatives we've had for the last few years to try to improve early literacy and including expansion of our preschool program, which is one of our major pushes, to try to get children reading at grade level by age three. Expansion of inclusion opportunities for students with special needs. We are, for those who are following, we just are in the process of a special education program review. Inclusion is the way to go with special education. Taking children out of district is very expensive. We're trying to, and it's the right thing to keep our children in our, in our system. So we are trying to maintain inclusion opportunities for children with special needs. It looks at maintaining the recent science and STEM initiatives that we've put into place, maintaining and upgrading our digital technology, maintaining current class size and extracurricular offerings. So it's really, it's a steady-state going-forward budget. It's not cutting back on things, that's the purpose of the needs-based budget. But at the same time, it's not a major expansion of our programs. It's a continuation, basically, of the programs we have at present. And those were the underlying assumptions we put forward. Just in terms of the process, the school department budget is, breaks into fifty or so categories by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education standards. And we actually went through it for each of those categories, looked at different growth rates for different things. So rather than a single rate, it really is very much a blended rate in our computation here, where we have special ed at one thing, tech materials and supplies at another rate. here, where we have special ed at one thing, tech materials and supplies at another rate. In non-union salaries, we built in actuals, actual projections of all the steps and lanes and so forth, as well as the cost of living. So it's a, it's a very much a blended rate. So I'll give it back to Emery.
Now we're going to move on to the police department needs-based budget. The police department expenditures accounts for about approximately 7% of the total general revenue expenditures. The salary and wage for the police department includes a total of four new offices and funding for two current vacant positions. The addition of these six offices, again, it's only four new positions over the five years, two are positions already in the plan but are unfunded because of those level dollars for the last six years of budgeting. So the addition of these six offices will raise the total staff of the Milton Police Department to 60 officers by the year 2020. The current ratio of police officers to citizens in the U.S. is 2.3 to 2.5,000 citizens. The addition of these offices will bring the department closer to the current U.S. ratio and would result in an approximate ratio of 2.1 to 2.5 per thousand citizens by fiscal 2020. For the general expenses, in order to account for cost inflation, general expenditures for the department, we forecast at a 3% increase annually. For new equipment, in order to account for the cost of inflation, new equipment expenditures for the department have been forecasted at a 3% increase. For the public works department, now, this is one of those departments where we talked about that all unfunded mandates have been included in these assumptions. This is one of those departments with an unfunded mandate, which is called NIPDs, which stands for National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Program. And there's going to be a lot of requirements over the next few years that the town has to comply with, and so in order to do that, the DPW director felt that he is going to need to put new people in place for that. So the DPW budget accounts for approximately 6% of the total fund expenditures. For salary and wage, the DPW believes that he needs an environmental coordinator position. This position would be responsible for administrative duties of the Conservation Commission, the Solid Waste Program, and the Stormwater Program. He also believes he needs a civil engineer position, and this would be created in fiscal year 2017. And this position would be responsible for field inspection duties for the Conservation Commission, the Solid Waste Program, and the Stormwater Program, as well as other DPW construction programs. The DPW director believes he needs three new labor/operator positions, and these would be created, one in fiscal '17 and two in fiscal '18. These positions will be responsible for increased maintenance and repair of the stormwater For the general expense line, the DPW is forecasted to include projected increases for a tree replacement program, vehicle maintenance repairs, signs, roadway improvements, and traffic island maintenance programs. The solid waste expenditures are forecasted to decline in fiscal year '17 due to the newly negotiated solid waste contract, but these savings are going to be offset by that new NIPDs program that I talked about a few minutes ago, and the Stormwater Management Program, and it's an unfunded mandate from the state. The current solid waste contract will expire in 2019. Accordingly, the collection of refuse, the refuse transfer and the disposal in curbside recycling for year '20 and '21 have been, have been projected to increase at a 4% for fiscal year '20 and a 3% for fiscal year '21. The fire department. The fire department budget accounts for approximately 5% of the total general revenue expend, total general fund expenditures. For the salary and wage line, the fire chief believes that he needs one new fire lieutenant position in fiscal '17, and he needs an additional firefighter in fiscal '18. The lieutenant's position would serve as the department's training officer and would work a day shift, providing continuity and quality control for the department's in-service training program. The current department staffing structure provides three working groups of 14 and one working group of 13. The addition of the firefighter in fiscal '18 would bring all three working groups to a staffing level of 14 each. General expenditures, in order to account for the cost inflation, general expenditures for the department have been increased at 3% annually. New equipment, the current funding level for the line is $57,526 for fiscal '16. There are no foreseen extraordinary equipment needs in the next five years. However, the appropriate level of funding required for new equipment is at $60,000, which is a slight increase from fiscal '16 to fiscal '17. And a significant portion of the fire department's equipment, such as turnout gear and self-contained breathing apparatus, requires replacement on a regular basis. The library department needs. The library department accounts for approximately 2% of the total fund expenditures. The Board of Library Trustees, along with the library director, feel that the department needs to have five new positions in fiscal '17, three full-time positions and two part-time positions. These positions are necessary in order to meet the current demands for library services, which are at an all-time high, according to the library trustees. Expenditures, general expenditures, in order to account for the cost of inflation, general expenditures for the department have been forecast to increase at approximately 3% annually. The books and periodicals, this expenditure has been forecast to increase $46,000 from $114,000 to $160,000 in fiscal '17 in order to match the state requirements. In addition, this expenditure is forecasted to increase approximately 4% annually for fiscal '18 to fiscal 2021. Information technology, this line is traditionally contracted, contractual, I'm sorry, this line is traditionally contract-controlled, based on the past several years. We, they are expecting to a 2% annual increase to the IT-related contracts. Consolidated Facilities Department. Consolidated Facilities accounts for approximately 1% of the total general fund expenditure. The Consolidated Facilities Director feels that he has the addition of one full-time utility maintenance position and one full-time craftsman's position in 2017. The Consolidated Facilities Department needs to continue to grow its in-house staff in order to meet the needs of supporting 25 buildings and approximately 1 million square feet of space. In addition, the staff will help the department to meet the challenges of maintaining aging town facilities and limit the need to hire subcontract labor. This way, with the craftsman, we can do a lot of the carpentry work in-house, and we don't have to pay the prevailing wage. General expenses, in order to account for the cost of inflation, general expense, the expenditures for the department will be forecast to increase 3% annually. Okay, so this is the slide. This is the slide. This is the needs-based, no override, no free cash scenario for the five years. Under this slide, it summarizes the town's needs-based forecast for fiscal years 2016 through 2021. As you can see from this slide, if no action is taken, it will result in approximately a $32 million deficit, accumulated deficit by year 2021. This slide is if the town wanted to approve the needs-based forecast. It would need approximately $6.4 million override for a five-year break-even budget. When we were doing this scenario, the three of us, you know, this was real education for us, and we understand that this is not a sustainable model. And this led us to our second scenario, which is an inflation-based expenditure forecast. Let me remind you how we prepared this inflation-based expenditure forecast. What we did was we took the fiscal '16 budget as the base figures. We projected salary and wage to increase approximately 3% annually for the town departments and 4.3% for the school department, to account for wage adjustments of 2% plus steps and lanes. These assumptions are based upon historical figures. All contracts expire at the end of fiscal year '16, as I had said earlier, and future wage adjustments are unknown at this time. The general expenditures are projected to increase 3% for town departments and 5% for the school department, to account for inflation and increased contractual costs. There are also, let me note, let me tell you that there are no new positions in this inflation-based scenario. It's all status quo for all departments. So under this assumption, the scenario of an inflation-based level dollar after five years, if we had no override and we used no free cash, we would have an accumulated deficit of approximately $20 million, which is about $12 million less than the needs-based budget. If we were to do an override for a break-even five-year period, the cost would be, for the override, would be approximately $4 million, which is about $2.4 million less than the needs-based scenario. I think this, this chart here is very telling. It shows you that our revenues are going to be increasing at a rate of, over the five years, of 15%. The inflation-based scenario increases at a rate of 19% over those five years, and the needs-based scenario at a 21% increase over those five years. So, back one slide, Amy. So we understand those two override numbers are mammoth to think about, 6.4 or $4 million override to break even at five, after five years. So what we did was we did a couple of assumptions to see what, what it would cost, what the override would be to break even at two years, what, three years, four years, and five years. And I wanted you to note, it's really important to understand that with each $1 million, that equates to approximately $115 annual tax increase on a home of assessed value of $647,647. So this is, I think, the most important page. I don't know if my colleagues agree with me or not, but this five-year financial forecast outlines the very real fiscal challenges facing the town of Milton. It shows you the gap between revenues and expenditures in both scenarios, the needs-based and the inflation-based. The financial forecast summary, again, was total general. Fund revenues are forecasted to increase, as I said earlier, 15% over the next five years. The needs-based forecast is expected to increase about 21% over that five-year period. If no action is taken, this will result in a projected accumulated deficit of $32 million under the needs-based forecast scenario by the end of fiscal year 2021. The inflation-based level dollar expenditures are forecasted to increase 19% over that same period. If no action is taken, this will result in a projected accumulated deficit of $20 million under the inflation-based level dollar forecast by the end of 2021. So as I had said earlier, these forecast scenarios presented what we believe totally unsustainable models, and the town must take action now to correct this type of budgeting. And some of the suggestions or things to consider are identifying new revenue sources, significant cuts to the services provided by all departments, regionalization of services with other communities, consolidation, reorganization of departments within the town's organizational structure, technology improvements, which will result in streamlining operations, operational overrides, or a combination of the options stated above. And that is your five-year financial forecast.
Thank you, everyone.
Boy, do I know how to silence a woman. I want to thank Glenn Pavlichek and Amy Dexter. They did yeoman's work, and it was a real team effort, and thank you so much. The departments, boards, and committees as well for their input.
We could take some general questions, but I think we want to keep specific questions down to a minimum, let people kind of digest this, and if you have any specific questions after you digest all this information, you can always email or contact any one of these three people.
Yes.
But I think the one thing that's significant, 81% of the total revenue of the town, I remember when I first started on the warrant committee, and Glenn put it before that, that number, when I first started, was closer to 60 or 65%. I mean, it's, it's working its way towards 100%. It'll never get there, but it's, but it keeps closing, and it just shows that none of the other revenue grows.
It's true. I mean, you, you have 2.5% plus, plus new growth in there, so you're growing, you know, generally towards 3% a year in that state aid. Second-largest hasn't kept up, and, and local receipts never do. There are a small portion, and, you know, short of the motor vehicle excise tax, there aren't too many big things in there that move around very much. So it's, it's not historically growing. I mean, the only, the only bums we've had in it is, are when, for instance, we had the meals tax added a couple of years ago, and you start to see some new sources of revenue kick into it, then you start to see a change in the, in the overall value. But the individual pieces themselves don't, don't grow very much. I think the most important thing just to say in this is that, you know, there's no, there's no do-nothing option here. I mean, if you look at the either scenario, I mean, there is, and I think people argue that the latter scenario, the inflation-based, is not a particularly pleasant scenario either because it means you don't address the needs of the community, and you don't address what needs to be done, and you don't hit the unfunded mandates, and it's still expensive.
You tread water, especially, you don't.
And it's, and it's tread water with some of those weights over there on your back. I think it's, it's not a good tread-water scenario. So I think, you know, I think the important thing to take out of this is that there's no do-nothing option.
Yeah. I think the other thing to note, too, is that, you know, the reliance on operational overrides solely solely, first of all, if you're trying to do some long-range planning, that's not a good source of revenue to kind of plug in there and plan. I mean, it's something you can't control very much. And we've been fortunate over the years that, you know, the residents of the town have been good to us, but, you know, some, one of these days, that's not going to happen, and it could be very ugly.
As Anne-Marie pointed out, it's been a while, and the community memory of basically needing an override every three or four years is starting to fade a little bit because it's been a number of years since we've had an override.
Yeah.
And there's a new level of education that's going to have to
True.
Have to be involved to make people understand the way this works. I mean, when you were, when it seemed like we had an override every 15 minutes between the school building project and operational overrides during the period, about 1999 to 2005, people were used to it, maybe in the sense, they knew what it was. I mean, they may not have liked it, but they knew what it was. I think there's a re-education that we're going to have to take on here to remind people that this is, as a legislator said, this is the price for not having smokestacks.
Yep, yep. And the other thing, other than, you know, even if you are a town with a lot of commercial, your revenue is still limited at 2.5% of the prior year. I mean, it doesn't go up just because you have commercial, it's just that you can spread it around to, you know, people that aren't residents a little more.
Commercial growth does a lot more new growth more rapidly.
Right.
They're constantly revitalizing their facilities more often than we rebuild our kitchens. So, you know, that's the one part of it that does give you a little more. You have more potential for new growth with commercial, and I think that's the part of the point of it.
I think the last page is pretty glaring, and I think tells us that we need to find new ways to find new resources and, you know, maybe public-private partnerships, and also regionalization with other communities, and also, you know, consolidation and reorganization within departments to streamline services to be more efficient. I think when you look around at the towns, they've had a lot of success doing that, and I think that we need to start taking a hard look ourselves at starting to do that.
I also think that this five-year financial forecast shows you the town needs to really begin to put together a strong strategic plan to address some of these concerns.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, and a lot of that's difficult to do. It's, they're hard decisions.
Yes.
When you start looking at consolidating and regionalizing and those kinds of things that, you know, that could save some significant money, but they come at a price, too.
And most of the departments, as you see, regionalized, if you go back to our pie chart, are not the big departments.
That's true, yeah.
You know, it's, you know, you're talking about regionalizing departments that are 3%, 4% of your operating budget with another town, you know, even though there may be significant savings in that, you know, regionalization, it is, you know, a small number in the overall scheme of things.
Yep.
And it's, you know, everything helps, but...
See, I've dug down a few. Solid waste. Just to explain that contract, too, that we got a bargain.
Yes, we did.
We've got a tremendous bargain because Sunrise scavengers just happened to have the City of Boston contract and happened to have all these trucks hanging around for two days out of the week that it didn't know what to do with, and gave us a significantly, you know, reduced contract that, you know, we're probably never going to get again.
No, once that expires, that will go up probably pretty considerably, that cost.
Right, right. So, that's...
Absolutely.
The other thing that concerned me in DPW was in our inflation-based, we really didn't, we didn't address how we're going to deal with the unfunded mandate. I mean, all we did really was rule as if it didn't exist, basically.
Exactly. So, you have to comply with that unfunded mandate, so what does that mean in the inflation-based? It means that you're going to let something else slide.
Roads can't slide much more. We won't have potholes, it'll just be all potholes.
That's what happens with these unfunded mandates. You have to comply with the rules and the regulations, and you have to put the programs in place, and so you have to balance it within the dollars that you're given.
And then the only other thing I wanted to ask about, and it really has nothing to do with this budget because I know, forecast, because I know it's not in there, but there's been some talk about free all-day kindergarten, which apparently, we're one of the few communities now that does not have free all-day kindergarten. Is that the case?
There are communities that don't have free all-day kindergarten, there are communities that don't have free kindergarten for everybody, open-access kindergarten, for instance. We have neighboring communities where there's a lottery and there's only two or three classrooms because they don't have the space. But if you look at communities that have kindergarten for everyone who wants it, and it's not free, you count them on your fingers. I mean, it's a small number. It's, I think, eight or something like this. It's a very small number that have a combination of universal kindergarten but at a price.
Right, okay.
I mean, the issue has always been, goes back to our Chapter 70 formula. You get Chapter 70 funding if you don't charge tuition, and for most communities, their funding was significant enough on a per-student basis that it didn't make any sense for them to charge tuition. They'd make more money by not charging tuition and taking the Chapter 70. Milton's never been on that end of the formula.
Yeah, right.
And so, it was instituted with a fee-based, and there is the issue of getting rid of the fee, the one-time cost for one year. If you have to, you're not going to get the Chapter 70 for a year in arrears, you eat the entire loss for one year, and then you make up a differential, in our case, going forward. The differential isn't the hardest part, it's that eating that one-year cost.
One-year, right.
We would be giving up over $1 million in revenue for one year by eliminating, by losing the kindergarten grant, which most people will tell you we're going to lose anyway, and giving up tuition. So, it's principally a one-time issue. There is a cost going forward, but the cost going forward is much less than the one-time cost of implementing it. And there's talk in the State House of, you know, of talking, of pushing for full-day kindergarten, pushing for expanded preschool. It won't be a mandate right away because most communities don't have the space for it, but assuming they had ways to create the space for it, I think it'd be here now. It's just a question of how are they going to try to encourage it in communities where, unlike us, we don't, you know, we were very lucky when we built the schools to have the Copeland Foundation and the Cunningham Foundation add additional money to the project so we could put in enough kindergarten classrooms for full day for everybody. That, you know, the School Building Authority would not have funded that. They would only fund for half-day. So, we were lucky to be able to build these schools so that we can house all those students. We have members of the school committee here, I'm sure would be happy to talk to you about full-day.
I don't know if there's anybody out there on the school committee that wants to say a word to about it now or not, but, yeah, I would think it would be a good use of one-time funds, certainly. You know, we consider ourselves, you know, one of the wealthier communities, certainly not the wealthiest by a long stretch, but one of the wealthier, you know, to not be given that service to the residents. So, you know, it would seem like a laudable goal, let's put it that way.
You planning on opening it up to the floor?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions.
Several committees and boards here.
Anybody?
I know a lot of people just got it this evening, so if you want to take time to digest it and email with any questions and follow-up, we're happy to respond.
Yeah, Ted.
So, this is a great job. It was very, very helpful for all of us to try and wrap our heads around the budget process this year and so going forward.
Ted, put the microphone.
Ted, did you come to a microphone? People at home won't hear you.
Yeah, you have to.
Okay. I'm Ted Hayes. I'm the chair of the warrant committee, town meeting member, precinct three. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Anne-Marie and Glenn and Amy for this large effort. And I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think the idea of kindergarten for all is a fine goal. I am concerned on the inflation-based level dollar expenditures forecast with the DPW budget. It's forecast for going up $40,000, $47,000. And I was under the impression that we were going to need to increase their budget by at least $800,000 to meet the mandates of stormwater management. There is no, no piece of the budget that can absorb $800,000. So, that's, so I think we need to worry about that a lot. And that might, you know, we might look at an alternative model that included at least an adjustment for that. The other main concern I have, and I don't know if this model has the facility to take an adjustment like this, but what would happen if you plugged in, instead of 2% for all your salary and wage COLA increases, what happens if you put in 1% or 1.5%? And will that automatically flow through the model to tell you what your deficit is at the end of five years or not?
The answer is yes, yeah.
So, I think those, that would be really instructive to see because I just have to, just have to say, you know, I know that your school committee and Anne-Marie are beginning to deal with negotiations, and these are difficult things to do. But I do know that Social Security is going for a 0% COLA next year, as they did in 2010 and 2011. So, I do think we ought to have the ability to look at what something less might look like down the road because it is such a large piece. And that would be helpful to be able to see from the, on the spreadsheets. So, anyway, other than that, this really clarifies what we need to be looking at, and a lot of work for us all. So, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Yeah, I guess the only point I want to make on that is you can run any numbers you want. I mean, you know, we can run different scenarios. It comes down to realism at some point in time in terms of salary adjustments, and we'd love to see zero, but, you know, these are, you know, municipal unions, and, you know, most of them have some kind of arbitration clauses in them. You know, the likelihood on arbitration that you're going to get a 1% pay increase is probably not that great. But, you know, we can certainly run the numbers and see what it looks like. And the DPW mandate was the one I raised, too, is, you know, that is definitely light. I mean, that was the assumption of that scenario, was that nobody got anything new, you know, that we just took '16 and ruled it forward, so that's just what that assumption was.
Darnell had a question, too.
Yeah, Darnell.
I'm Darnell Turner, warrant committee member for a while, recent one. First of all, I want to say thank you for putting this together because it is constructive to understand how the leadership of the town is thinking, what they're thinking about for the people, and also to say, I think this is the very rosiest of pitches because I think people really have to understand that this is where we're at, and we finally gave them some hard numbers to look at and understand that what I call, tell my wife all the time what we're doing says, you know, this way we've been budgeting and dealing with this stuff for the last couple of years has been really hard. You know, it's basically crisis budgeting. Every year, we can't live like this. And so, I want to thank the group putting this together and at least giving some numbers to the people out there to look at and say, you know what, hey, this is real, this is where we're going, and, you know, there's nothing left. And I want to thank you guys for putting that out and doing that. And going forward, we can digest this and talk about it, but there's a lot of things that we're missing in this. And we got a DPW that's going to have to be addressed. We got a number of things that have to be addressed inside that time period that's not here. And I just want to make sure, because I talk about this all the time during many meetings, that people understand that. That's all.
Thanks, Darnell.
Yeah, that is a good point with the, you know, new fire stations, new DPW, you know, should they happen, and they should happen, the question of will they happen? But, you know, obviously, the cost of those are probably going to be funded out of some kind of a debt exclusion, combination of debt exclusion and that stabilization fund thing that I came up with. But they're going to be much bigger facilities when they are built, and that's going to mean their operating costs are going to significantly increase, and that hasn't been factored in either. So, I don't know if those are going to be built in the next five years, but at some point in time, yeah, they're going to cost more to run when they're twice the size.
Anyone else, any other questions or comments?
The only other point I wanted to make, too, is just to kind of recognize the library, and I know Will and his staff and the library trustees just finished their long-range plan. It was both a financial plan and an operational plan. I read through it, it's a great plan, but a lot of what you saw up here was as a result of some of the information that came out of that long-range planning that they did.
We've got members from the town government study committee here, and I'm glad they're here tonight, too, to listen to this discussion. And one thing that we'd like the town government study committee to look at is potential consolidation of some of our departments, whether it's cemetery, DPW, some departments that might be under independent boards, and whether there's ways that we can have cross-working, I guess, I don't remember what the right word for it is, but having, combining the workforce so that maybe we're making better use of the resources that we have in covering some areas that we haven't previously been able to do because of the structure, because we're under different independent boards. So, that's something we'd like the town government study committee to take a look at for us. I know, I don't see Mr. Gordon here, but I know that was one of the reasons he went back on the town government study committee was to try to address that question.
And also continued efficiencies between the schools and the town. You know, I know there was a push.
We've had some successes on that.
We've had some successes on that, but to continue to do so.
Yeah, and again, that's another area where Mike Zulis and his committee with Anne-Marie and the few people working on the town school consolidation committee have come up with some areas to, in payroll and some other functions, which have made some improvements.
Start to tackle the procurement officer and
Yes.
Moving towards centralization of procurement, you know.
This is probably the start of a bigger dialogue on what some of the things you covered on that last page are, some of the strategic things that we need to start taking a look at now that we have the five-year numbers in front of the town.
Absolutely.
I want to add my thanks also to Anne-Marie, to Glenn, and to Amy for all of their work over the last two years on this project. This has been really an extensive time commitment for all of you and a lot of work, so thank you very much.
Now, the next thing to come out of this, obviously, is, and the more important for the current needs is the contingent, non-contingent budget, which should be coming out hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, don't hold me to it, but hopefully by the end of the month.
Great. It'll be a first stab at it, obviously.
That's right.
We might have thrown a monkey wrench into that earlier with the unemployment budget on you, so we'll have to see how that fits in.
Threw my timeline off a little bit.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, and we're actually right on schedule. Let's see, we have budgets for the Conservation Commission and the Historic Commission, which are basically just contractual service, small contractual service budgets, about $23, $25, $25 each. And there's no... And there's no change in them from?
No.
So, I'll move that we approve and forward to the Warrant Committee the FY seventeen Conservation Commission budget at the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for both the contingent and the non-contingent budget.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll propose a motion to approve and forward to the Warrant Committee the FY two thousand seventeen Historical Commission budget at the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty dollars for a contingent and non-contingent budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
At this point, do you want to take a, a couple of minute break?
Did you clear the remote? I think so, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, we'll take five minutes.
Great.
We're back on. Okay, next order of business is the acceptance of a, a pilot payment from the Mary Wakefield Charitable Trust in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept the Mary B. Wakefield Charitable Trust pilot payment in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Just like to thank the, the Charitable Trust, because they're certainly not a huge entity and, and, you know, for that size entity and what they do, it's very charitable of them. So.
It is.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, next order of business is the Board and Committee Appointments, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint L. Tucker Smith of sixteen thirty-two Canton Avenue, Fred Taylor of ninety-eight Gulliver Street, and Kristen Kleiman of ninety-nine Otis Street to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee to serve for a term of one year.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
They all look like they're very qualified for this committee.
Yes.
And that was a bit of a challenge to find five people who wanted to, I think there's a couple of openings still.
Yeah, reading through their backgrounds, they have quite, quite a bit of experience and.
They do. Glad they're willing to serve.
Okay. Let's see, item, item fourteen, well, item fourteen is a discussion about a letter to the FAA, Massport, and the Logan Community Advisory Committee regarding airplane noise. And that's a letter we've been working on, and, you know, actually Katie's been, spent quite a bit of time on it. It's not really quite ready yet, needs a couple more drafts, I think, before we actually get there.
It is. Yes, Cindy Christensen and I have been working on this along with Karis North, our Town Council, and Anne Marie. And so, we're, it's not ready tonight, but will be ready very soon. And if we are going to be scheduling a meeting with the Board of Health, then that's probably the right time that we could take it up. The goal has been, along with getting this in before November twelfth, which is the CAC's next meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. So, the next thing we're on the agenda is the comment letter on the Boston Logan International Airport two thousand fourteen Environmental Impact Report. And that is one I think we are ready to take up tonight. So, Karis, would you like to join us?
Good evening.
Good evening, Karis.
Good evening, Karis. So, I know this is a, this is a, a letter that we're responding to based upon an extensive environmental report that the state actually does.
Correct. So, this letter is, the state puts together the two thousand fourteen Boston Logan Environmental Data Report, which goes through environmental issues and analyses at many different levels. It's a nine-part report. There are only a couple of parts that are relevant to Milton, which is what the focus of this letter is about. So, they, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs invites comments on the letter, and the, the deadline for comments is November sixth, this Friday. So, at the direction of the Board and at the joint meeting with the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, I took on preparing a draft of a comment letter. The comment letter is, it's not a general discussion of Milton's concerns about airplane noise pollution, but it is a very focused and pointed letter that comments specifically on this report on the portions that are relevant to the town of Milton. So, for example, there's a section about airplane noise that is relevant. There is a section about air pollution, but it's only related to air pollution for the operations of the airport on airport property, cars, buses, planes, things like that. So, it doesn't have any relevance to, to Milton. And same with the water pollution section. It's about stormwater and NPDES permitting and things like that related to the operation of the airport that aren't relevant to Milton. So, the letter's very focused on the, on airplane noise only. So, I prepared a letter. I looked at Dr. Christensen's letter from last year. I looked at a letter that Ms. Killingback had drafted last year. I prepared this letter and then sent it to Ms. Fagan, who submitted it to the Board. And then I took comments and have revised it, and I think you have the most recent version. I have comments from Ms. Fagan, the Board members, Dr. Christensen, Mr. Andressino, Ms. Musto, Ms. Goonan, Ms. Kinsella, Mr. Schmidt, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Killingback. And, you know, to the extent possible, those comments have been incorporated. Not every single one was. And so, you should have the final draft in front of you. Do you have any questions or comments on that draft?
I, I guess just to, so everybody's clear, this comment letter goes back to the state, goes back to the Secretary Beaton.
Correct.
And what is the process for dealing with these comments at, at the state level? Do they?
They review the comments, and then in next year's environmental data report, they will publish a response to the comments that they've received. So, for example, in this environmental data report, they published a response to Ms. Christensen's comments from, from last year. And everybody who commented last year, the comments are included in the appendix to the report and, and their response to those comments, or some response to those comments.
Okay.
Not terribly detailed. So, that's what we would expect to hear from them. And they may provide a response back to the town, you know, they may mail a response back to the town. I believe they did that with Dr. Christensen's letter last year.
Okay. But, but, so in terms of, of this comment letter, it doesn't mean that they're going to go back and, and make any changes or any, any requirements?
No, I'm not.
For Logan Airport?
No. It, it simply, they will explain their response to our comments and, you know, either try to educate further, or, you know, maybe they don't agree with the comments and things like that. Maybe they don't think they're relevant. It, it'll all depend. But they don't have any obligation to change their operations, because the report itself is a snapshot in time of what happened at Logan in the two thousand fourteen year. So, it's, it's already passed.
It's already happened, yeah.
It's already happened. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Exactly. And again, this is a topic that has a lot of different fronts. So, this is one, one important thing that we, letter that we file, but that doesn't mean that we're not doing a lot of other things at the, at the same time, such as the other letter that we're working on. This is one piece of the bigger picture.
That's correct.
I, I took a look at it. It's, it's not in our materials tonight. I know it came over late this afternoon, so I, I read it late this afternoon. I thought it incorporated a lot of different comments that the various people you mentioned, Karis, had, had submitted. And I thought it, I thought it looked good.
Yeah, I took a quick read through it. It looked fine to me.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it definitely covers a lot of the information that we were looking to get into this, and I'm glad that we were able to share it with a lot of people to get their input as well.
Agreed.
So, I notice we don't have a, we don't really have a motion.
We need a motion to approve it, do we?
Yeah, I would say so, yeah. Approve and sign.
All right. So, I'll move that we approve and sign a letter to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs providing comments on the Boston Logan International Airport two thousand fourteen Environmental Data Report.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thanks, Karis.
Thank you, Karis.
Welcome, Karis.
Okay, item sixteen on the agenda is a discussion of the composition of the Airplane Noise Committee. And is this something we're gonna have a joint meeting?
Anne Marie might have an update. I know we're trying to schedule a joint meeting with the Board of Health.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are.
So, we don't have anybody from the Health Department here tonight?
No, we do not have anybody. They could not make it this evening, but we are trying to schedule a meeting for next Monday evening. That's November ninth.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, we.
We should have that answer tomorrow.
We'll defer that to this discussion until that time.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. As long as everybody's fine with that. Okay. Item seventeen, Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to let the Board know that they had a lengthy meeting this evening, and they can look forward to November seventeenth, having another lengthy meeting. We have ten budgets on that night to, for you to review and approve. It's your fire budget, your police, your IT, your general insurance, your Board of Selectmen's budget, your law, your veterans, your group insurance, your DPW, and your consolidated facilities. In addition, that night, you have the public hearing on the classification of properties. You have the public skate fees. Again, you're gonna have another discussion on that. We have the group that, the DPW group on the snow policy coming in to, for a first reading of the town of Milton's new snow policy. And we have a liquor license, Mr. Chance, will be coming in on the seventeenth as well. So, you have another lengthy agenda.
Are we gonna get OPAP on that one or the next one?
Either that one or the twenty-third.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chance.
Yes, it is.
I, would it be worth thinking if we are able to schedule for the ninth with the Board of Health?
Mm-hmm.
After we have the joint meeting, would it be possible to move any of those budgets onto that night to take some of it off the seventeenth? That sounds like an awful lot.
It does, yeah.
It does. I wonder if we, could we do that?
I have no, I have no objection to that if they're ready.
I could try to do that.
Same here.
The goal is to try to have all the fiscal seventeen contingent, non-contingent budgets approved by the seventeenth, so that we, Amy and I, the town accountant, can start to load those into the spreadsheet, the new spreadsheet that we created, and have a, hopefully by the end of November, have a discussion on contingent, non-contingent budget for seventeen. So, that's our hope. So, I will take a look at those budgets and see which ones I can move to the November ninth meeting if that meeting does take place.
And I, I think this board has to have a discussion at some point in the near future about that override number and what we'd be willing to put on a ballot. Because it, obviously, it is a, it's one of those things, you know, you, the, the number can't be so large that it risks not passing. I mean, you want it to be realistic. You don't want it to be so low that it's, doesn't do any good. I mean, it's, it's kind of a balancing act of, yeah. But if we have to give up a little bit in terms of service to get a number that we think will be more palatable to the, the voting public, you know, it's.
Should that discussion happen after the town administrator presents the budgets?
I think so, yeah. And, and, you know, the two, the balanced and the.
The contingent, non-contingent.
Yeah.
I think you'll have a clearer picture at that point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Chairman's Report, I'm gonna pass on the Chairman's Report tonight. Member Reports?
I have nothing tonight.
The only thing I have is just to wish the Milton High School football team best of luck this Friday night.
Absolutely, yeah.
Against Stotan, led by a, a former Milton player, Greg Burke. So, it would be a bittersweet win. So, I imagine we'll have a record crowd, which would be great. So, hopefully, the weather will, will stick to be really, really good. I think it's supposed to be in the seventies, so I imagine it'll be great.
That would be great.
And, and Milton's hosting that game, right?
Correct. Home field advantage throughout.
Yeah, that's, that's what goes in undefeated bracket. It's good.
Good luck to the Wildcats.
That's right. Or Whiz Kids.[1596.63][1596.63](laughing). Okay, Citizen Speak responses. We only have one citizen speak, and, yeah, I, I understand the concerns, obviously, of the Highland Street neighborhood and, and, you know, the proposed ninety-unit, forty-B project there. And, and, you know, I totally agree that, you know, ninety units is, is, you know, totally unreasonable and outrageous and would be a disaster for that area. I, I do want to make it clear, though, that, you know, that there's only one board that could have approved the going to ninety units, and that was us, and we did not do that. The only thing that we said was the number of three-bedroom units was unacceptable in their original proposal, when I think they had seventy-some-odd units, but there was an exceptionally high number of three-bedrooms in, in that. So, they reduced the three-bedrooms and went to ninety units.
Well, the developer did that on its own.
The developer did, yes.
I think what's important is that the town did not negotiate that.
No. There was never any discussion with us.
That's correct.
So, I just want to make that clear. Then, the, the second issue in terms of who the, who the litigator will be is it's Doris McKenzie Earns, who works for Murphy Hesse-Tumey, and is a very, very experienced litigator. I don't, Karis, does she have, to answer the question, forty-B litigation experience?
Yes, she does.
She does. Okay. And, and we will be using Kathleen as a, as a consultant throughout the whole process. That's the board's wishes, and that will be what happens.
Yeah, and John Flynn. Doris and John are working on the, on the forty-B, as well as Kathleen O'Donnell is available to them.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Future agenda items.
I don't have any for tonight.
No. You know, the thing, what we've been saying all along, you know, this, those things we want to, you know, kind of, the loose ends, we want to kind of wrap up the pilot thing and a few other things, but, you know, just in terms of moving those forward. So, okay. So, I am gonna propose a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation, collective bargaining strategy with non-union personnel, and collective bargaining strategy with union personnel, believing that having such a discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body, and to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley, yes. So, we are.
Yeah. Five, four, three, two, one, and we stop capturing.